Yeah, I don't think three minutes can be enough. Uh, no. So he's coming, I know we texted earlier today.
Oh, okay.
We can kill some time. I'll just start.
We're not doing our training, I guess.
He's coming. Okay, uh, I'd like to call the organizational meeting of the Hopewell Valley Regional School District to order. Uh, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News and The Times on January fourth, two thousand twenty-four. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon Files. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. The, uh, meeting is being recorded for the purpose of board review, future reference, preparation of the minutes, and viewing on YouTube Bulldog TV and the school district website, www.hvrsd.org. Please join me in a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So I am, uh, Robert Colavita, the Board Secretary of the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education, and this is the one meeting of the year where I preside over the meeting until the Board has a president and a vice, actually just a president. Um, this is a unique time of year that Boards of Education do not have leadership. They are reorganizing, or actually organizing tonight. There's no such thing as a reorganization. It's just an organizational meeting where they, um, set their business for the year. So what the first, uh, order of business we have tonight is to report the election results from November fifth, two thousand twenty-four, uh, where the Board had five seats, uh, contested. We had, in Hopewell Township, two three-year terms. Uh, the winners, uh, were Jackal and Genovacy with seven thousand two hundred and four votes and Drew Kapadia with five thousand one hundred and thirty-five votes. Those two individuals will be serving three-year terms. In Hopewell Township, we also had a one, we had a two-year unexpired term, which was won by John Slotman with seven thousand four hundred and fifty-five votes. And we also had a one-year unexpired term, which will be filled by Amanda Stelliano, uh, with, she received two hundred and thirteen votes. She was a write-in candidate and was the high write-in winner on that. So those are the four seats we had, uh, from Hopewell Township. We also had one three-year seat, uh, in Pennington Borough, and that seat was, uh, won by incumbent Alex Resnick with one thousand three hundred and twenty-one votes. So that, uh, will be our five new, or some new, some re, uh, being re-elected members of our Board. Um, turnout, actually, for this election, uh, interesting, we had sixty-eight percent, uh, turnout in both Hopewell Township and Pennington Borough, pretty significant. Hopewell Borough only had fifty-eight percent turnout. So just some interesting facts there. What I'd like to do now is administer the oath of office to our five new Board members who will meet me at the podium in the back. Okay. That takes care of the swearing-in part. If you noticed, I did not take the roll yet because we did not have those members sworn in yet. So we'll now take the roll and officially open the meeting. Dr. Genovacy.
Here.
Mr. Kapadia.
Here.
Dr. Liliston.
Here.
Mr. Peters.
Uh, here.
Dr. Resnick.
Here.
Mr. Slotman.
Here.
Dr. Stelliano.
Here.
And Ms. Williams Galliano.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Okay, the next order of business is, uh, and my last, would be the election of the President. I will call for nominations for the Office of Board President. No second is necessary. At the close of nominations, I will take a roll call vote of each member asking you to state your selection for Board President. If there is only one nomination, I will conduct the voice vote of yays, nays, or abstentions. Once a President has been elected, I will step down as temporary Chair of this meeting and pass the gavel to the newly elected President, who will then conduct the election for the Office of Vice President in the same manner. Um, I am now opening the floor for nominations for President of the Hopewell Valley Board of Education.
I nominate Ms. Anita Williams Galliano.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, we'll now, uh, vote. Mr. Kapadia.
Yes.
Dr. Liliston.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Dr. Resnick.
Yes.
Mr. Slotman.
Aye.
Dr. Stelliano.
Yes.
Dr. Genovacy. And Ms. Williams Galliano.
Yes.
All right, congratulations. Welcome back as President.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for, um, uh, reelection. In regard to the election of the Vice President role, I will call for nominations for the Office of Vice President. No second is necessary. At the close of nominations, I will take a roll call vote of each member asking to state your selection for Board Vice President. If there is only one nomination, I will conduct a voice vote of yays, nays, or abstentions. This will conclude the election of year of officers for the two thousand twenty-five calendar year. Nominations, please. I'd like to nominate Dr. Genovacy. Any others? Seeing none?
Do a voice vote, yeah. This is all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Seeing none? Thank you, Dr. Genovacy.
Reminders, um, so we can get back into our reorganization, um, and training. Um, just a few reminders that I will be doing my, uh, referendum budget talks at all of the PTO meetings, um, over the next couple of weeks. This week, I will be at Stony Brook tomorrow at seven o'clock. That is an in-person, uh, meeting at Stony Brook. Um, please check the details of your PTO newsletters. Um, for the parents of Hopewell Elementary, I will be present at eight forty-five. I think they have in-person and virtual option for that one. And then on Thursday at seven o'clock, um, I will be at, um, let me click on this one. Everywhere, I'm everywhere. At Tollgate Grammar, and that is in-person, I believe, in their media center. So again, check your PTO flashes, uh, for those locations. Our next board meeting, for those of you who do not, do not have students currently in school, or if you just like to attend and get tours of the buildings, the first, uh, on-tour meeting we will have, it will be January twenty-seventh at Bear Tavern Elementary School. We'll start at five thirty with a tour of the facilities for anyone who's interested, and then we will have the meeting afterwards in their cafeteria. It'll be a great event. We're going to be celebrating our educators and, uh, support people of the year. We are also going to be having a little surprise for the Board as it is the National Month to Recognize School Board. Uh, so there's a little surprise for you. Um, yeah, so we look forward to seeing you all there.
Thank you, Dr. Treese. Um, I do not have a report today, but, um, we will move on to our annual Board Ethics Training, and we will welcome our favorite legal consult.
Thank you. So before Paul gets started, I gave, um, each Board member on your name tag had a acknowledgement of receipt of the Code, uh, Code of Ethics for School Board Members. If you could sign that and send it around, if I don't already have it. Um, this is an annual requirement that we present you with the Code of Ethics. Um, you acknowledge receipt of it, and not, it's not necessarily to be done tonight, but, uh, during the year, you do need to receive some form of ethics training, um, either by me. We typically do it, um, with Mr. Green, um, as he is, uh, an expert in this area and has a, always a fun, uh, question and answer period at the end of it. So without further ado, Paul, we turn it over to you, um, to educate the Board on the do's and don'ts.
Mr. Colavita, do you have the projector going here?
Can you hold my phone?
Sure. Now, actually, feel free to ask, as we go along.
My computer's crashed. It, it times out. I came in here, I came in here early to get it set up, and it crashed.
It never failed.
I have no idea.
Well, while Bob is getting that going, I can, I can rethink. So we're talking about the School Ethics Act, uh, this evening, uh, fun topic, but it's an important topic. Basically, in our representative form of government, it is essential that the conduct of members of the Board of Education and their administrators, uh, hold respect and confidence of the people. The key here is to avoid conflict, their conduct which is in violation of the public trust, or which creates a justifiable oppression among the public that such trust is violated. That is a key factor that the School Ethics Commission often looks at, um, in terms of conduct doesn't necessarily have to be a conflict, uh, it can create an oppression that's justifiable. So to whom does the Act apply? It applies to all of you as Board members. It applies to managerial employees, officers of the School Board Association, uh, and to most of your school administrators, superintendents, assistants, superintendents, assistant administrator. Typically, in principle, as well, we'll be covered as school officials. The Code of Ethics itself only applies to Board members. There's a separate Code of Ethics that applies to Board members. We'll look at that a little bit. Why are we talking about this tonight? Because we must. Regulation NJAC, which is your district administrator's board, requires each district Board of Education to discuss annually the School Ethics Act and the Code of Ethics pursuant to statute and a regular sort of public meeting, which is what we're doing tonight. Although we're working, having people that have discussed this. So we have the Ethics Act itself, which has two sections. One is the, uh, areas of prohibited acts, uh, which addresses direct conflicts of interest. That, you have a Board bylaw, your policy zero one four two, uh, which covers that. And then the second section is your Code of Ethics. So there's section, section one prohibition. Where you have an interest in a business organization, uh, or engaging in any business transaction or activity and/or conflict with the proper discharge, conduct of duties, using or attempting to use your position to secure unwarranted privileges. Uh, that word unwarranted is important because, uh, you can sometimes seek to secure privileges for others uh, in your family that are no different than anybody else in the public. But unwarranted means using your office essentially to get a special privilege for a family member. Acting in your official capacity in any manner where you or a member of your immediate family uh, have a direct or indirect financial involvement that might reasonably impair, expect to impair your objectivity or interest in the company. No person, no school official or business organization of which you have an interest may represent any person or party other than the Board or district in connection with a matter pending before the district. However, you do have a right to represent your own children, um, in any matters inside the district, uh, vis a vis your role as a parent and their role. And we have the Code of Ethics provisions, section two, uh, very important. This is really the reason you're here, essentially. You will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of the children. That is the lodestar, that's the guidepost. You will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, color, sex, which all of them stand. These are directly out of the statutes, next slide. I will confine my Board action. This is your role as the Board. You are not here to run the school. You are here to see that the schools are well-run. Your role is policymaking, planning, and appraisal. So you will help frame policies and plans only after the Board has consulted those who have affected five. So that consultation is very important. Next slide. When we talk about policymaking, planning, and appraisal, Board members formulate the programs and methods to effectuate the goals of the school district. So that's done through committees. You have standing committees and ad hoc committees standing, or your regular monthly committees that, uh, review the basic business. Ad hoc are special committees that are created on an as needed basis, uh, and then cease to exist once their work is completed. You may only discuss and act on things, items, at a duly convened public meeting. No one has individual authority as a Board member. The only time you have authority is sitting at this table at a duly advertised meeting. Code of Ethics provision, section D, I will carry up my responsibility not to administer the school. Yet you have an administration that runs the school. They run, they run the district essentially. Together with your fellow Board members, you are to see that they are well-run. That is your obligation in policymaking. Now, in order to prove a violation of this particular provision, it's necessary to show that, uh, the respondent, who is the answering party in a complaint, gave a direct order to school personnel or became directly involved in activities or functions that are the responsibility of school personnel for day-to-day administration. We'll see some examples of that as we go along. But again, the key is you cannot give a direct order to any school personnel. You have no authority to do that. Their job is to run the district. Your job is to oversee it as a Board, not as a committee. So for example, uh, this case goes back to two thousand five. A Board member asked for copies of FCT reports directed to the guided secretary. Uh, inspected lockers, took it upon himself to go into the boys' locker room and inspect lockers and report back what he saw, and instructed staff on the superintendent. So that was clearly a violation. Next slide, administering the schools. So individual Board members may not give direct orders to the administration. So how do I ask questions of administration? Well, you may ask questions relative to the process by which your recommendations are being made. Typically, that's done at a meeting or committee meeting. You may engender conversation at the board meeting regarding the motion regarding a recommended action. Or, uh, you may ask the Board President to return the recommended action to the committee. You can actually make what's called a motion to commit if, uh, if the Board feels that, uh, something is coming for them for an adoption or approval, uh, and they don't have sufficient information. Uh, you can actually make a motion to commit, or you can informally agree that you submit an action to the committee for further study and recommendation. That's the process. You may, as the Board or as a committee, direct the administration to perform certain tasks, studies, analysis, et cetera, so long as they're consistent with your role in policymaking, planning, and appraisal, or if those tasks are consistent with the Board's goal or the goal of the sets for its school to achieve. Again, no individual Board member should be doing this. It should be done by the Board as a whole or by a Board committee. The Board or its committee charges the administration to request to perform those tasks. You cannot take it personally. I will recognize that authority rests with the Board. I will make no personal promises. You have to be very careful talking to members of the public um, to make any promises, to do something, even look into anything. Uh, that's not your role. Again, your role is to represent the district, to oversee it, but not to make promises to people in order to take private action that may compromise the Board. Private action is an action outside of the role, your role as a Board member. Actual evidence of violation is evidence that you made personal promises or took action beyond the scope of your duties, which by its nature had the potential to compromise the Board. Frankly, there are times when I take private actions that might, might fly because didn't have the potential to compromise the Board, but that's not a risk. Next slide. I will hold confidential. Uh, sorry, I'm, I'm. I refuse to surrender my independent judgment, special interest in part of the group, or to use the school to personal gain or the game of friends. Very important that, uh, you as elected, an elected official must use your own independent judgment. Um, you are not to, uh, basically surrender that judgment to outside groups, whether it be a special parent group, uh, it could be a DDO, uh, it could be a political group, any outside group essentially that seeks to influence you. You can listen to them certainly, take under advisement whatever information they have to give you, but you must exercise your own independence. You cannot really, you know, basically refuse, you cannot surrender your judgment. Next slide. This is crucial. Um, probably one of the biggest, there, the two biggest ethics areas that we see issues are. One, administering the schools, trying to basically micromanage the district. Uh, and this one, confidentiality. I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools which have disclosed to these needlessly injured individuals in the school. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information. A lot of people get burned on that last one, by the way, because they put information out there and turned that not to be accurate. Uh, and whether or not they should have put it out, if it's inaccurate, you could be held to have violated the section. Confidentiality is crucial. You will hear things in executive session. Uh, you will have access to information. It could pertain to elected associations. It could be a student matter. It could be an employee-staff matter. Um, all of those things need to remain in the room where they're discussing. What's discussed in that room stays in that room. You do not even accidentally, uh, reveal or release that information to anybody. Uh, including sometimes other Board members. If you have information about a student matter, for example, um, and you reveal that to other Board members, that is an ethical violation. You have information that goes to the superintendent. I will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties. So it's your obligation to basically support and protect your administration, your superintendent, assistant administrator, everybody. Uh, if there's evidence that you took deliberate action which resulted in undermining, opposing, compromising, harming school personnel and the proper performance of their duties, that's a violation. I will refer all complaints to the Chief Administrative Officer, that's the superintendent. So all complaints, if you receive a complaint, you report it to Dr. Treese. Uh, you will act on complaints at public meetings only after failure of administrative solution. Which means that, uh, you do not take any action on your own to try to resolve a complaint. You do not go, for example, uh, to the principal and see if you can resolve something, or anyone else. You take it right to the superintendent, and it ends there. Unless there's a continuing issue, it doesn't get resolved, there's no administrative solution. Then, at a public meeting, the entire Board tries to resolve a particular matter, but that's almost never occurs. Because there typically isn't administrative solution. That occurs at some point along the way. Yes?
Um, so I thought that the appropriate procedure here was to prefer the parent or community member to talk to the appropriate personnel, not us to go to the superintendent.
You can, you can respond that way if it's, uh, an inquiry essentially. Somebody says, I have a particular problem. Uh, you can respond and follow the chain of command. And, so example, for example, if you're having an issue, you should start with the teacher.
Correct.
Uh, talk to the teacher, then you can go to the principal, and then take it up. But if there's a specific complaint that, that involves something a little different in terms of not necessarily an issue with the staff member per se, parent, teacher issue, um, those should be referred to the superintendent. What I would recommend you do, um, even if you tell people to follow that chain of command, is still report it to Dr. Treese. So that she's aware that, that this has occurred, that somebody did come. That way you're covered on both sides. Now, the corollary to that, the next slide, is the Code doesn't explain how you refer the complaint to the Chief of Staff. So you can either make the referral by the Board member directly to the Chief of Staff or you can direct the constituent to go directly to the superintendent. So those are the two options in terms of that. So those are the two options in terms of that. But you're right that if it's a particular matter that involves the school itself, that relationship with the staff member involves itself. Two, yes. Who can file a complaint, an ethics complaint? Anyone. Any person may file a complaint. However, a board of education is not a person, unlike the U S Department, which is a corporation, or a people. Boards of education and the School Ethics Commission has rules may not file complaints, but any person may file a complaint. There's a six-month statute of limitations to filing. The only entity that can determine whether a school official's conduct violated the Act of School Ethics is a body that's established in the Department of Education, and they have, and they've made very clear that boards of education have no authority over board members' actions. Conduct is strictly relied on them. You can request an advisory opinion from the S E C about your own conduct or someone else's proposed course of conduct. Any school official may request an advisory opinion about your own conduct. If it revolves, involves another school official, you have to copy that school official, and that person may file it on the hearing. And we do see that a lot.
So a couple of serious questions.
Sure.
How long does the S E C have to wait?
Right now, they are seriously backed up. They are.
Because I've never asked.
Right. Well, if you need a quick answer, you're not going to get. It's going to take you several months.
So it's not, it's not a practical.
Right. If you have an immediate, yeah.
If you're in a situation where you're trying to figure out an appropriate course of action, that is not the way to go.
Well, it's the only, it's the only way to go, short of, you know, you can ask me certainly.
Right, but it's not a practical way to go.
Yeah, you need, you need to have a lot of advanced planning if you're going to go there. If you have a specific situation, and you have the luxury of additional time to think about it, advance accordingly. Yeah, but if you need an answer within thirty days, certainly, it's going to take easily three to four months, if not more. In terms of complaints that they're dealing with, they're, they're very backed up. Some of these are going years, or we're getting decisions done.
But oftentimes, that's why we go just.
And if you have a question, by all means, take it through administration to me and, you know.
Right, so that's the other thing is that we can ask you, but that has to go through.
Right, yeah. Any, any increase may have to go through the board president. The president to me, in terms of that. And we'll, you know, we'll give the best advice we can. I mean, the key is, you know, sometimes there's no clear answer. And we can just give what we think the S E C would say. They tend to be pretty strict in terms of any potential, even something appearing to be. But sometimes there will be a clear answer. Sometimes there will be an advisory opinion on it, or something close enough that we can do it. You can also ask school boards associations. They can't give you legal advice, but, right, but they can, they can give you their opinion in terms of what their, their take on it is. At the end of the day, that may help you, if you talk to the attorney and/or the school boards, that may help with the, if you do wind up violating the Act. That certainly helps you have an opinion that this was permissible conduct. They will oftentimes reduce the penalty in that case, so that kind of advice. It was always good to ask. There are a variety of sanctions. They really only vary in terms of perception more than anything else. The least of the, them is a reprimand. And, you know, go through that again, kind of a ruling. Censure is more serious, where it's basically designed to really send a stronger message, and the censure gets read at a public meeting and posted throughout the district. Suspension, obviously, is, you know, they can actually suspend a member from, from the board. And the most significant penalty is removal. They can remove a board member. It doesn't stop the board member from running again, getting re-elected, but it does remove the board president or current chairman. You also should be aware of the School Ethics Commission's financial disclosures, which new board members must file within thirty days of being sworn in. And Mr. Calavita, official of S E C, is that. If you're a returning school official, it has to be honored by the thirty. The board secretary puts names on the list of school officials, but it's your responsibility to confirm that your name's been added and that you complete the form. And this is basically a financial disclosure form to reveal any financial potential conflicts of interest that you may have. They are public records, and they actually are reviewed and approved by the county. This I've just put in just for, just a flag in terms of conflicts. Obviously, we're not going to go through this whole thing, but just be aware that if you have a relative, which at this point, for purposes of this, any relative asks a question, no matter how remote the relationship is, cousin, third cousin, wife, or whatever. If you have a relative who basically is either employed in this district or is involved, or a member of a collective negotiation association in another school district, you have a potential conflict of interest in respect to collective negotiations. You have a relative employed in this district prior to your coming on the board, you are also not permitted to participate in any way in the superintendent's evaluation or any other discussion or review of the district's conflicts. So just so you're aware that there is this chart that the Ethics Commission has put together that kind of lays out the potential conflicts in terms of, you know, what your relative is and whether they're employed elsewhere. Just be aware that, you know, if you're asked to participate in collective negotiations, have somebody who's a relative employed in another district.
I can't, I can't win.
I can't say anything. Don't say all the wrong words. Paul?
Very quickly, you said any is employed by any district, any district, any public.
Any, any school district. Well, any district in which the N J E A or the A F T represents the district. So if you had a private school where the A F T of the N J represented them, it would apply to that as well. But it's primarily school.
And only within the state?
Only within the state. Yeah. So free speech issue. You have a First Amendment right to express yourself. However, there are provisions under the Ethics Act that limit or put some restraint on that ability. You may not disclose information which is inaccurate, is confidential, or has the potential to compromise the board. Typically, kind of confidential and potential compromise, and also very clear that whatever you put out there must be accurate.
So, a question. If somebody asks you a question, if somebody asks you a question, just how do you think the board is doing? That's a not ask, right?
Yeah. I think we're doing great. You should also, as part of this, you should not public or politicize your staff, either, you know, speaking to other people who are at a board.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So at what point is the board member's speech different from the superintendent's? So when we were all asked for reelection by first of me and pretty much every local news source, the question that is similar to how we're doing, I think we were given what's the grade we would give the board. Are we supposed to respond to that, saying that we can't answer this board ethic? Or are we in speakers and speakers?
Well, you can say, I'm speaking not as a board member. You're going to see that in a second disclaimer. Say, I'm not speaking as a board member, I'm speaking as a, as a private individual, and not from my perspective as a board member, but from a member of the, kind of the big. Exactly. You may not represent your personal opinion as the position of the board. So anything that you represent as your personal opinion is just that, and you do not leave people to believe that you speak as the board, that this is what the board's opinion is. The board only has two spokespeople, two spokespersons. One is the board president for board matters. The other is your superintendent for matters involving the school district itself and not the board. So that when you make a formal expression where your affiliation is likely to be recognized, for example, letters to government officials, letters to newspapers, speeches to organizations, you must make a statement in two parts. One, you are a member of the board. Two, you are speaking as a private citizen, and the opinions expressed do not necessarily represent those of the board. Very important that you have both of those. And if you look at your policy, oh, one forty-six, it actually represents.
Okay, so a quick question. So in a, during a, during a topic where we make that statement, but maybe commenting on something to do with the school district, we're still okay there?
Yeah, as long as you make that disclaimer with a caveat that we'll talk about it in a second.
Okay, yeah, let's go to the caveat.
With a little caveat there.
So before we go to the caveat, does the board, so can someone else, can someone else be delegated to speak to the board once the board has, is that the board's job to delegate?
That's the board's job.
Or is that the president's?
No, that's the board's job.
So the whole board?
Well, the vice president in the absence of the president would have the authority. Typically, to speak on behalf of the president if the president's not available.
Right, but if, let's say the board wants to.
Yeah, the board wants to, for example, have someone.
That has to be.
The board would have to specifically delegate that, and they would have to be very carefully at what it is. So not only do you help, you know, designate them as a spokesperson for a particular matter, but you also have to be very careful at what they can say, because you can't give them hard luck. Go ahead and say whatever they particularly feel like, because they're speaking on behalf of the board. They're very limited in what they can say.
Paul, real quick, can you, can you speak a little bit about how this relates to correspondence that comes in via email from the community?
In terms of if you get, as, as an individual board member?
Yes, so I think one area that I've had questions about is we get a lot of emails from the public.
Right.
And can you speak about just sort of what the proper way to handle, does it go directly to the board president? Do we loop in the board president? Can you just speak a little more about that?
Yeah, so, so if you receive an email and it's not for the entire board, if it's the entire board, it'll be dealt with through the board president. You get an email yourself, or one or two or three board members get an email, then basically the response should be that you aren't able to respond under the Ethics Act. And in fact, I have some language that some of our districts use that basically sends out an automatic response, like, you know, we received your email, I am unable to respond directly. You know, we're referring to the board president for a review. That's the approach. You cannot really respond directly other than to say, you know, I referred it on, I can't.
Well, you can say thank you for contacting us.
Yes.
It's very important for us to be a problem solver, to say thank you for that.
Oh, sure, yeah.
No, I appreciate that. That was my understanding, but I also don't want people to think we're being rude and not responding directly to their inquiries. And so I just wanted to highlight.
It's perfectly appropriate, and that, as Alex said, you can be, you know, gracious about it. Thank you very much for contacting us, your, your opinion means it's very important to us. I'm unable, you know, legally to respond to you directly when I'm referring to the board president.
Thank you.
So the next slide is just an example of a disclaimer that statements are made in your capacity as a private citizen, not as a board member. You're not representative of the board or its individual members. So we represent the board.
So I have a, just a case example that I want to make sure as we move to the next year potentially. We had a referendum in the fall, and if hypothetically, a board member were to post in a Facebook forum about their opinion on the referendum and whether or not it would be encouraging people to vote yes or no, but we preface it with that statement, are we allowed to do so?
Yes, well.
And we don't share any, and we don't share any confidential information? And it's anything that is, anything, any reasoning we provide is all that's publicly available.
The caveat, I would say, is yes, but the S E C has lately, in a number of decisions, indicated that there are times when a disclaimer is not effective, when it is obvious that you are still essentially acting or talking to the board member and representing the board. Later on, we'll see an advisory opinion from 2022 that I've kept in the presentation, where a board member sought to basically create a webpage or social media page, kind of with updates of what's going on in the district. And even with the disclaimer, the S E C said, well, it's clear that you're essentially acting, trying to act as, essentially, where people will see you as acting as a spokesperson for it. And you can't do that. That's not, that's not permissible. So if you're going to say something beyond the basic, here's what I think on a particular topic. If it's going any deeper than that, you should talk to the board president and consult on, you know, what is going to happen. Because there are these lines of cases that are kind of starting to say, well, okay, sometimes a disclaimer just isn't enough, or a time point shouldn't happen. So it depends what you're doing. I'm going to have a follow-up for the, for the question. So one example is the Tristan case involving the Randolph Board of Ed, where a member wrote an op-ed endorsing candidates. He did have a disclaimer. Said he was writing it on his own, but he didn't seek prior approval from the board. He had multiple references to his position on the board, using the term "we" and "there", and his failure to make clear that he had expressed pronouns on the board. So he created this impression, even though he said, I'm writing this on my own, in the manner in which he generated the endorsement, he created the impression that the board was backed by him.
So just to be clear, the endorsement per se is not a problem?
That's right. You have those two things. He failed to include the other very important part, which is he failed to say that this is his own opinion and not the board's.
But he also used, who wrote the press for it?
Right. Exactly. He created the appearance that the whole board is supporting the way he wrote it. So there's an example where, you know, first of all, it was not an effective disclaimer because he didn't include the second part that said, you know, it's not the board's opinion. But not only did he not include that, but he went beyond that and created an impression that the board was essentially in favor of his opinion. So that's outside the scope of his duty as a board member, and clearly has the potential to compromise the board. Was recommended a reprimand, the S E C did a censure. The A L J's administrative law judge, some of these, most of these cases go off to the Office of Administrative Law for an independent hearing. The administrative law judge issues an initial decision, which then gets reviewed by the School Ethics Commission, which then determines what the penalty should be. And ultimately, the commissioner reviews that and cannot overturn the factual finding or conclusion, but can change the penalty. And the commissioner reduced the fact of reprimand since he did at least attempt to represent his views as shown, given the.
So I was going to ask, what depends on how long?
Right. On a complaint, it's.
Is it even effective?
Well, I mean, that's a good question. I mean, the other question is.
I mean, why, I'm going to take the guess.
Well, that does occur. That does occur. In fact, you know, one of the cases, we'll see, the company responded, was off the board, and they implied that they would have actually either suspended or removed the board. So all they could do was censure.
Paul, I think an issue is it still counts against the board when it comes to Q S A and things like that.
I was going to say, there's two things. One is Q S A, the other thing is the board has to indemnify the board member for the defense of the case. That that money, to the extent you have a deductible that's going to come out of the board's pocket, and the rest comes out of the insurance, which could potentially affect the insurance. But, and it's just a, it's just a bad look.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not planning.
And that's forever. I mean, you know, your name is out there.
Either, I was just pointing out, this is something that should be a bit ineffective.
Yeah, I mean, look, you, we can all talk about, you know, what the effectiveness of the process is, and it's, you know, and, you know, at the end of the day, you know, all of these things are, you know, there's no peace in them per se, obviously, but it's more a, a public shaming.
It is a source of embarrassment when Rosette and I go to meetings and they go, I saw your school district as a, as an example in what not to do.
What not to do.
What are you doing?
Right. Just a little side discussion. The, part of the Ethics Act is you are obligated to uphold all laws, rules, and regulations of the state Board of Ed. So there's a couple of important laws to keep in mind, the Open Public Records Act and the Open Public Meetings Act. This is, this language is directly out of your bylaw, one sixty-nine, which is basically, you've got to be aware that the Open Public Records Act means that any government records, unless there's a particular. there's a particular exception under the law, can be produced or required to be produced to the public upon a request. That includes any of your emails, includes any correspondence. So the first thing we always say is don't put anything in, in email that you don't want to see all over Facebook or on the front page of the paper. And basically, the, the policy, the bylaw says that because of there's a potential for inappropriate disclosure, if you do have confidential information in an email, we would hopefully, on, on a request to produce and catch that and not produce that, but it's possible it gets missed, it's possible it gets out. So because of that, basically, you are not or should not put confidential material into your email, especially for anything you might be discussing. So that's one important thing. The other caveat is under the Open Public Meetings Act, you don't want to engage in what we call a serial meeting, where you get a quorum of the board going back and forth and discussing a particular board matter. That's a no-no, because that essentially is now you're conducting a secret meeting out of sight of the public. And although there's no cases in New Jersey specifically on point on this yet, the general consensus is it's a problem and many other states have ruled that that's a real issue. So you don't want to basically be copying, should never reply to everybody, that's the first, never reply to anybody, because you're not sure who's on that reply.
That's in general, I'm like, don't reply to anybody.
Right, yeah, right, exactly, exactly, never do that, right.
But, but Bob, I think that's, I'm sorry. I, I think it also includes a rolling collection of emails, right?
Yes, right, so you get, you start getting into a.
If I send an email to a few people, but they send it to four people, then we argue that it's a fraud.
Right, exactly.
And, and just to be clear, in terms of, 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 is the board?
Yes, but you generally want to avoid any side discussions before you, it's just not a good idea. I mean, the potential is those board members could then forward it to others, now you've got a quorum of the board without even intending to reveal it. So let's look at this year's advisory opinions. These are what have been released. Again, these are, you know, you can request an advisory opinion from the Ethics Commission, and these are what were issued during the past year. First one is the university professor, the graduate school of education, an individual also ran for a while, co-administered various teachers, supervisors, administrators of the district, also has sat on the dissertation committee for current superintendent. May, did not actually teach, the superintendent was on the dissertation committee. May that individual participate in matters involving these individuals? No. That person must recuse from any discussions or decisions which could relate or otherwise involve any current or former students, not just of that professor, but any current or former students in graduate school of education or employed. Think primarily because, for a period of time, he had active. Also, if the member were to provide free professional development workshops with the district staff, that would be a violation of the Act. That's a conflict.
So the first one, the first one, they told.
Right. Last thing. Well, they don't want any, they don't want any connection, whatever, with the board member acting in any way to provide any kind of instructional services. That, that's beyond the role of the board member. Now, clearly, if we weren't a board member, it's a conflict, but they find that that's a ground for a conflict. That basically, that, that involves the board member essentially in kind of administration. Next one, so, School District A sends its student to School District B for grade seven and twelve, the elementary district that then sends to secondary. So the superintendent of District B was previously in District A, the elementary district. When she was in the elementary district, she terminated an employee, one. That employee happened to be a board member in District B. The board member starts a civil suit against the superintendent and District A board. Started a petition that the superintendent fired at District B, and has filed various commission complaints against the superintendent. Is the board member prohibited from evaluating superintendent, participating in votes, voting on matters involving other administrators? Who do members take issue? Commission said, look, if it were termination alone, that would not create a per se conflict of interest, that doesn't rise to the level necessary, but here, the totality of the circumstances, hostility, the multiple actions against the superintendent, recusal is required. As to the other administrators, there was no evidence of animus, and therefore not a per se conflict, not to say that one might not arise in the future, and they said, look, we'll, we'll deal with that should that complaint come before in the future, but right now there's no evidence of that. So here you had a litany of activities that this student was taking to go after the person. Clearly, it seems to have an obvious conflict, but certainly a perception, if nothing else, that this person cannot objectively deal with, the review of the superintendent's district, a large act of fraud. Number three dash twenty-four, board member asked, would I violate the School Ethics Act if I ran for a seat on the county board of commissioners? The SEC didn't exactly answer that. They said, well, this is outside our jurisdiction, we don't have any, you know, jurisdiction over county board commissioners or dual office holding. However, should you, you know, there is a dual office holding statute which might prohibit that, if, if it's determined that that would be a violation, that you would then be violating the requirement of the School Ethics Act. So they basically said, this is, this is just not our, our field. Next one. Board member has two non-dependent adult children who are trustees of a nonprofit foundation, and one of those two children's also counsel to the foundation. Before the member came on the board, the board conveyed property to the foundation and now believes the foundation has not fulfilled its obligations and anticipates additional action. May the member participate in discussions of both related to the foundation's property? No. The board member's children are relatives within the meaning of the Ethics Act, clearly a conflict of interest to vote on any matter involving the entity or the public body on which his relative served as voting members. They analogize this to prior decisions they've had where you may not, as a board member, vote on a matter involving a relative employer. So if you have something coming for you, for example, if your spouse is employed, you know, there's, there's a direct conflict there for you to, if you're voting on a bill list, for example, if your spouse is employed by someone whose company is on the bill list, you would have to say. So the, the, the. We often get situations where the local education association enforces a board member for election. In this case, there was a press release from the association which did not get published, newspaper published it, but the member still used it in their campaign materials. They sent postcard mailers to all of the NJ members in the district, which was reported by the board member on the disclosure form, the gift of kind, had the member who served on the policy committee, interested in question, participated in discussions on policies that affect the board. The SEC looked at this, they have a prior decision opinion on this, eight, ten, dash eighteen, where they held that, basic unsolicited involvement, unless it rises to a very significant level, not going to disqualify you in the negotiation context when that came up. In this case, it was more of a policy question. This did not rise to the level of involvement in the earlier case they had in 2013, where the association distributed newsletter, hosted a hot dog rally where the board members addressed the public, they held a phone bank, they distributed bomb cards that indicated ballot numbers. They found here it didn't quite get to that level, therefore it's not a per se conflict, and the board member had participated in policy discussions that might impact on the association members. The board members cannot be assumed to have surrendered their independent judgment to the association simply because they have received their acceptance. Next one, board member's non-dependent child, adult child is a district employee. Before the board member came on the board, the employee sent a litigation hold letter to the board alleging that the board attorney engaged in potentially tortious conduct against the employee in the question of investigation. Further alleged that the employee, the board counsel is continuously engaged in a steady longstanding feud with the employee's family and has attempted to manipulate the superintendent into participating in the ongoing dispute. Board had an outside law firm conduct an investigation, which found that none of these allegations were substantiated. Question is, may the board member participate in any votes or discussions pertaining to the contract between the board and board attorney? Here, the board member should not, should recuse from that. It's clear that there's quite a bit of animus between the employee, the employee's family, and the board attorney. And whether or not the, the member actually is unable to exercise independent judgment, this is another example where the SEC says, we're going to look at the public perception. Reasonable that the public would perceive that the member is unable at this time to maintain objectivity and independence, and therefore should be. You often do that, you often go on what's reasonable for the public to perceive. The two board members who own a local ice cream shop, and apparently the only ice cream shop in town, host fundraisers for the PTO, a high school drama club, various school-related booths, also can they employ minors who are students in the district. I've quoted the entire gist of, of their opinion here, because it's interesting, but they basically hold that the public is quite likely to view your outside engagement with PTO, theater club, and other organizations being further of, the furtherance of their business interests in contrary to the public trust. Clearly, they're owners of the shop, they benefit financially from any sales, the public may perceive, again, perception, the board members A and board member B, the two board members will place their ownership in the business for dominance and benefit of the district. Again, not saying they would, but the public could reasonably perceive. Moreover, in general fundraisers, that don't just benefit the organization, they yield the benefit to the board member's business, monetary or otherwise, which may cause the public to perceive their ownership as a conflict. Next slide. So they, they went on to say, this would also apply to anything involving, if you gave gift certificates for a trick or treat, you can't do that. Again, that could be resulting as a kind of a receiving a benefit back. They may respond to solicitations for advertisements from district-related organizations, will playbill your book and the like. If it's open to the public at large, may not be provided preference or treatment in the advertisement, and the advertisement should never indicate their board members or revoke their board status. They may employ students, but they should view that application the same way any other employee's application is made, they can't give the preference or treatment. And if any matter involving the student comes before the board, they have to recuse themselves. Should any district students or personnel patronize the shop on their own, they should refrain from providing them any special inducements like discounts, which are not available to other people. Again, very, very strictly requiring them to sever their role as owners of the shop from their role as board members. Yes?
So like, what if you don't own the shop? So like.
If you don't own the shop, it would.
I didn't do this while I was a board member, but like, I often gave free tickets to the family for that, because it's a, it's a board member.
Yeah, that, that would not be a, a problem because the key here is that they're the owners and they have financial interest in the benefit, whereas you would not have that as someone who's a volunteer, or even an employee, in terms of that. You wouldn't have to stay at that level. The key, the key was that they were the owners. Good question. Board member's adult child lives with the member, works in the district, wasn't quite clear the, the way the, the quester made this request, the, the child is, adult child, it is a child, does work as a substitute for an outside contractor, and that's okay, but then talks about the child had also been a music director under stipends, and it wasn't clear whether that was through a negotiated collective bargaining agreement or whether it was through an outside vendor. So what the SEC said is, if the stipend position is through a third-party vendor and is paid directly by the vendor without board involvement, then the member can participate in the superintendent's evaluation. But if it's paid under the collective negotiation agreement, the member may not participate. Because again, you have a relative who's employed directly in the district, you are then prohibited from any role with the superintendent's evaluation or any other aspect of the superintendent's role. Eleven dash twenty-four, this is kind of the short version of a very long set of facts, but board member subsequently accepted employment with a law firm, had previously represented the member in litigation against the board before the member came on, and may that member participate in the appointment process to fill a board vacancy. So the question was, they had a vacancy on the board, and one of the board members who didn't like the way this person, this actually occurred after a vote in the, that actually happened, going to Alex's point, they then filed for an advisory opinion in the, you know, it's nice, the SEC said, well, you should have come to us first, but how are you going to come to us first, because, you know, there wouldn't tonight? But they said, there's no violation in the appointment process, there's, again, not a presumption of a conflict of interest, you're permitted to hold views aligned with other board members. And, you know, the, the, one of the, the board member challenging this said, well, this person could, you know, influence or pick a board member who they think is going to basically support their position. And the SEC said, well, that's okay, you know, we're not going to assume that, you know, you're going to influence somebody to vote on settlement, you're not going to make that for some reason, you have evidence of that. Nonetheless, when participating in matters relating to the selection of a candidate, clearly the board members were reminded they must always be objective, exercise independent judgment, must not allow the previous or pending matter, apparently there was supposed to be no negotiations, but, 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 impact their decision-making as a board member. And of course, the member must continue to recuse from any matters involving the law firm itself at their appointment. Board member's aunt is employed in the district as an administrative assistant to the director of curriculum, both the assistant and the director are not in any negotiation unit, may that person participate in collective negotiations? No. The board member's aunt is a relative within the meaning of the Ethics Act, even though the aunt is not a member of or covered by the local association, the SEC said, union contracts may be used by non-affiliated employees to negotiate their own contracts. Clearly, the SEC has no clue about how school districts work and what a non-affiliated employee's bargaining, individual bargaining power, but they said you could still use that as an example, and therefore you cannot participate in negotiations because you could, in a sense, by approving a contract to your association, be conferring a benefit upon your aunt. Again, this is one of those really remote perception issues, because there's no clear conflict, obviously, but it's a, it's a potential perception issue. Also, the board member must recuse from any discussions in both related to superintendent employment and any other administrators who supervise the candidate. Fourteen, board member seeks to review the resumes of all candidates who were within a candidate pool for a position being recommended for hire by the superintendent. They punted, they said, no, this is outside our jurisdiction. You're not asking whether that conduct would violate the Act, you're really asking whether a board member is required to refrain from viewing resumes of other candidates. That's not within our jurisdiction, that's the commission of education scope. However, if it is determined that board members may view resumes somewhere down the road, the member's role would be limited to observation and assessment with full knowledge that all final recommendations are wholly with the purpose of the superintendent. I have to be very careful because that's a very dangerous road to start going down, because in essence you're saying, I'm not sure I trust your judgment, superintendent, I want to see all the other applications. And that's really not your role. On the other hand, you do have a right as a board member, once this matter comes before the board, to vote no, provided your, your vote is not arbitrary compression. So one could argue that if one wants to exercise that particular role, you'd want to see what you have against the board. So it's a slippery slope. There is an old case that's out there that's very little known that, that did hold a board member had a right to see that, there's no recent published cases on it. At some point, I imagine, it's going to come up, but it hasn't been proven for a number of years. I think most boards are savvy enough to. Getting back to the, what we were talking about earlier, this is the 2022, I've kept it on this, this year's PowerPoint, just to go back over, we've kind of already addressed it, but this was a request to post non-confidential information related to the board of the district on social media, including a disclaimer that I'm doing this as an individual and not the board. And the, the commission said, because you're providing it related to the board and related, similar to your official duties, any attempt to disclaim the speech is personal and likely to be debarred. Community knows your status as a board member, would likely attribute any information to be from the member in your capacity and or on behalf of the board. So again, you, you have to include not only the disclaimer, but you have to now be careful that the, the, the general circumstances don't appear to give, give an impression that they're written on behalf of the board.
So this is another one where I'm, I guess, always the details would help to decide if it's a non-confidential fact.
So this is another one where I'm, I guess, always be careful with how you manage that. You would think, right? It was, it was, it was nothing...
Nothing.
Right. You would think, but they said, "No." They said, "Don't do it." They said, "It's basically, there's, you're not the board spokesperson, that, you know, you've got an official spokesperson, you've got a board PR, you know, that goes out there. That's the board, that's the board administration, board administration job, and that you should not be doing that either, because that's not your role as a board member."
They also spoke of people who do it, right? I would imagine posting links to a public presentation, they have a public board...
Well, that would be, that would be okay. Yeah, yeah, that's...
Okay, so that would be fine.
That would be fine, if you're posting a link that's something that the board got on.
Right. So now, I go, hey, to those who are interested, here is the link to the presentation, but that's still be okay?
I think that would be...
Okay, good, good. So there is some sanity to this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's just, here, the, the problem was that the member was, like, wanted to essentially go out there and do this on his own, and provide all this information on his own, and, like, you know, gather all the information, things that really should be on the board's website, and create the social media. They said, "That's not your role. Not your role as a board member." I don't think there's any issue if you put a link to the board.
So I, I have a quick question on this, because I, I've seen several board members throughout the state have personal Instagram, Facebook, whatever it be, social media profiles, where they talk about the work they're doing on the, on the board. They give monthly updates, or they give whatever, even if it's been their entire term, and they give a summary of the things that they've worked on. None of that information is confidential, I think they've talked about it on social media.
They're stating on very thin ice.
Well...
Very thin ice.
So my, my question would be, if that was deemed as, you know, a violation, in a world where that same, you know, individual's running for reelection, and their opponent says, makes a claim that says, "Oh, this individual has not done anything on the board," or "has not contributed to the board," are they then not allowed to respond by...
Well, I think you can respond, again, as a private individual, you know, but you're running, you're running a risk. I mean, and, and that's, that's a problem that I have with some of these decisions, because, you know, how do you basically, it's like fighting with one hand tied by your back. You know, they're basically, you know, hamstringing a board member, you know, against somebody who's not subject to these, because somebody who's running for the board is not subject to the Ethics Act. So it's an, it's an unequal fight, it's an unfair fight. So you have to basically try to finesse that. It's a very hard thing to do, in terms of that.
The good news is by his name, is that's the way...
Yeah, you'll be off the board.
Lecture's hang over, and the term may be over.
Your, your term may be over before they get to it. Yeah, that is, that's a very good point. It could be, it could be a while. We can go to our, our quiz, our annual quiz.
It's being recorded for us.
Right. So, "The Act was violated. Superintendent denied a board member's request to have code-conducting violations of the child removed from the record. Member communicates directly with the superintendent several times, seeking her direct intervention in her reversal of finding. Member also emailed other board members about the issue, without indicating she was doing so with her parents as a board member, as well as the board attorney. And the member's spouse also raised the issue in public comments at meetings." That was a violation. We're not going to ask people to... That's true. That basically, they said that essentially, the board member, we can go to the next slide to back to, and summarize what they found. "Repeated communications were an attempt to persuade individual board members, board council, and the superintendent to reverse the adverse disciplinary finding, therefore used her position as a board member to further her personal agenda." Again, you can represent your child. You have every right to do that when you're dealing with a teacher. Now be careful, because whenever you're dealing with staff, they know you're a board member, and it, you know, it is intimidating. And you have to be very careful to say clear that you're acting with your parents. You have a right to represent your child as a parent, as a teacher, as a principal, as a superintendent, but again, as a parent. Here, the board member essentially used her position as a board member to further her that particular agenda. She tried to provide a direct order to school personnel, which you may never do, you may never give any orders to set for the personnel in the district, and she took action beyond the scope of her duties, which had the potential to compromise the board. That was a real... Is it a violation of Section I to support and protect school personnel when, after the board approved the new contract with the superintendent, the board member went on Facebook and posted that the board's action to approve the contract was in this space? Please don't do this, but it was permissible. That basically, the, the board member had a right to express her own opinion publicly in terms of that. They found that it did not directly impact the superintendent, the superintendent's contract was approved. It had no effect whatsoever on the superintendent's performance. You know, the rest of the board was, you know, frankly, you know, gassed at what the member did.
So are we to assume that there was, that following the one word, there was a disclaimer or...